Hello, hello, hello. Can you guys hear me? If you can, let me know. I am trying to fix this. Oh, you can see my video? Can you guys see me? You can hear me? Oh, boy. You guys could see me moving this whole time? Dang. Let me, um... You guys, on my screen, because I'm about to start studying in just a second. I got everything pulled up. Uh, oh, you may not be able to hear me. I had everything pulled up on my screen, but I didn't know you guys could see me. All right. I feel really stupid. Here's what I'm gonna do really quick, because I want to see what you guys are seeing, just to make sure everything's good before we, I start pulling stuff up on my screen and get started. I'm gonna pull up what you guys are seeing right now on my phone, just so I can make sure that everything looks good. And then, you know, we'll be good to go. I, Devin, come on, man. I hope, I hope I wasn't picking my nose on the screen, man. That's embarrassing. All right, I'm just switching really quick, making sure I get everything set up. As you can tell, this is not my... Oh, oh, oh. Oh, it's dark in here. See, I couldn't even see this. Give me a second. I'll be right back. I'll be right back, guys. Give me a second. Let's take a look. Let's take a look. I'm, again, I'm watching myself on my phone. Hey, it was dark in here. Oh, you gotta be kidding me. This thing's got ads. Some guy's getting some good ad placement right here. Oh, boy. Oh, there we go. All right, we're doing okay. We're doing okay. All right. I'm just gonna get going then. I'm gonna put on some music. I'm just gonna hang out. I mean, that's about it. That is about it. Let me get back to what I was looking at earlier. Do, 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 and then we will get going. I appreciate you guys joining me. This is just gonna be... This thing's over here, but I have to look over here. This is just gonna be really relaxing time to hang out, study together. I'm gonna be going through, I'm gonna pull up on my screen, the IBM, uh, this is gonna be the Data Analyst Course. And with that, I'm gonna be doing the data analysis with Python within the IBM Data Analyst Course. That's the one I reviewed on Tuesday. And so on Tuesday, I reviewed this one. And so that's the one we're gonna be looking at. Yeah. Let's, um, let's get going. Play some Frank Sinatra. I might, I might. I like Frank Sinatra a lot. But I also really like just some beats in the background while I study. Yes, I hope you appreciate. I might be, I'm gonna, see, you know, Coursera asked me to do this, and I was like, this sounds super cool. Let me do this. But, and then they sent me some example videos, and they were all really professional and well done. And you guys know me, I'm not super professional. I don't do things well done. And so I'm doing my best here, but I feel like I'm like not supposed to talk. And I'm not sure if I'm if I'm supposed to talk to you guys the whole time, because this is supposed to be like study time, and you're not supposed to talk during study time, right? So I don't know. I don't know if I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing, but maybe I'll kind of talk you through or show you guys what I'm working on later. But I'm looking forward to going through this data analysis with Python, just because I think that's gonna be really interesting. I'm maybe doing a lot of these quizzes, because I don't even, I'm gonna do some reading. I don't want, I obviously can't watch the videos, but I'm gonna be doing some of that. But yeah, so I mean, we'll see. We'll see what I end up doing. Let me know if you can hear the music. I'm gonna type this in the chat. The chat real quick. Let's get this going. I'm trying to pass some quizzes, really testing my skills here. Oh, gosh. Wait, I really need to do some of this reading. Good, good, good. All right. Hey, what's going on, everybody? What's going on, Nick? Thanks for joining. Keeping it super chill over here. Oh, my gosh. Coursera. There we go. I'll do a little bit of like, personal, I guess, Q and A time during this, because I don't mind talking about myself. I just don't wanna ruin everyone's study time. But James Volk asked me, what made me choose good old Greenville, North Carolina? I didn't, uh, I actually really did choose Greenville. Because I used to live in Charlotte, and I didn't want to live in Charlotte anymore near my parents. And so I decided to move far away. I got some good scholarships to lots of good schools, but I only really applied in North Carolina. I was talking to my microphone for a second. That's what happens when the camera's over here, because I'm trying to get the side shot. But what made me decide to go there was I was going pre-med, and so they had a good pre-med program. So that's why I went there. That's how I ended up in Greenville. You've been to Greenville. Uh, it's a unique, it's a unique city. Oh, boy. That's, that's a good question, though. Percent error, just real quick, to ask a good kind of good question. He said, are you going over the problem set with us, or are we just studying together? You know, I, I think this is more of just gonna be like a chill study time with some music in the background. I might answer some questions during it. But nothing too serious. And if you guys can't see me, that's okay. I'm gonna maybe like adjust my chair this way. You guys can see me even a little. But yeah, it's just gonna be a chill time. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be going through the, I'm gonna be going through the IBM Data Analyst Professional Certificate, and I'm doing the Python for data analysis. Genuinely need a refresher on this. So this, that's why I chose this one. I think it has some really good stuff in it. Uh, but this is on importing data sets. This is honestly a really, we're getting more ads. This is honestly a really good one for me to go over, because I use a limited amount of things, like I, like data sets that I, that I pull in with Python. Normally into like Databricks in Azure. Um, and so to me, this is actually, is actually a good one to look over, because I don't do a lot of JSON XML files. I do some flat files, but I do mostly CSV files. So I'm gonna kind of see what they talk about in here and what they go over. This is genuinely, like, data acquisition is a good, really good one to look at and know. Hey, Marcos. He said, say hi to me, Alex. I'm from Argentina. Marcos, what's going on, man? Thanks for joining. I appreciate you. Zen asks, am I gonna do a study session every Friday? Probably not. But if you guys like this, I might do this more often, maybe like once a month or something like that. That could be really cool. Well, let's see. Yeah, let me, um, you guys, I mean, it sounds like you guys wanted to see some of my work. I, my tech skills in terms of creating videos is probably not where other people are at. I'm much, I'm very, I'm a simple, I'm a simple person. So I might just like physically show you my screen, if that's okay. But, you know, I'm going over some pandas, reading in some CSV files. I have quite a bit of experience with this one, to be fair. So I've been seeing if I learned anything new, because honestly, if they're going into like flat files and stuff like that, I could really use, I could really use some information on that, a little, little fresher. Yeah. Hey, Pedro, you asked if I could show you analysis? I think I'm gonna, I think I'm going to either, one, figure out a way on how to do that in a live stream setting, or two, I absolutely am gonna make videos on that. So that's definitely gonna be a thing. But real quick, I'm gonna look, work on this for a second, and then I'll come back to the chat, because I want to make sure, I wanna get, I wanna look at this to see how they're doing this in here. This is like putting me to sleep. Good night. Can I skip some? Can I skip some of this? It's like, uh, it's like what I put my kids to bed with. See? Check on towers. Yes, skip the song? I, I agree with you. I'm not trying to put everyone who's at home studying right now to sleep. That is like, that's, I should have done that. Oh, see, now this I like. This I like. Edwin asks, what's the vegetable or fruit of the show? You know, it's vegetable for the ATA show, for this live stream. Maybe I'll pick a fruit. Let me think on that for a second. I will. I'll digest that for a second. I'll give you something back in just a minute. You know, this, um, this data acquisition, this reading in files with pandas, extremely good stuff to know. And, like, I am not, I am not, you know, a Coursera fanboy or anything. I really do like Coursera. But I gotta be honest, this, the way that they present this is really good. So if you're doing this with me, I mean, if you open up their Skills Network Labs, like when you look, when you do like the practice stuff, really cool how they do this. I don't know how they set this up. This looks like the kind of work like I do in my job. Yeah, that's cool. So it's just asking me to find the name of the columns of the data frame. Okay, that's easy enough. Yeah. Just data frame dot columns. You know, print that out. Easy enough. Yeah, you know, sendip, sendip, however you say that, I, I will say that I do a lot of, on my channel, a lot of, I feel like a lot of teaching, and I'm actually gonna be doing a ton more of that soon, where I do a lot of more tutorials on Python, on Tableau, Excel, all those things. Sometimes it's nice to just sit back and study a little bit. That's nice. But yeah, I'll sure, I'll share real quick the link to my screen, or to where I'm at. In case you guys are curious as to what I'm looking at. And yeah, I will show you my screen just a little bit in like the super old fashioned way where I show you. I pick it up and show you my screen. Because I am not technologically advanced enough. All right, let me do this. Let me just... I hope this gets you to where I am. This is like the course that I'm working on. But that's for you who is, uh, Cam Russ, Cam Russ? That's a cool name. Uh, that one's for you, though. That's what I'm doing. So I'm working on importing data sets. And let me, real quick. All right. Let me see. Let me see if I can do this correctly. If it looks terrible, let me know. I don't even know if it's gonna be framed properly, to be honest. But I'm just gonna hold up my screen, kind of show you what I'm looking at. And this is the super old fashioned way, so you know, forgive me if it's not as good as other people. I'm not really known as being better than other people. I just do things differently. Let me see. Let me pull it to a good spot. So it's asking us to add different headers. You know, you're pulling in a CSV file. You have the headers that are in the CSV, but when you pull it in, you want to give it your own headers. Happens all the time. It's literally, let me see if y'all can see this. It's literally showing us how to give the new headers, and then how to replace your headers with what you want those headers to be. Very useful. I preach over and over and over again on my channel that pandas is amazing. I mean, you should learn it. And so you said can't see it. Let me... I, you know what? I guarantee you I know why. It's because I turned on that light over there. I... All right. Let me try again. I'm gonna go turn off that light, and then I'm gonna show you. Yeah, it's because I turned this light over here. If you guys came for a high-quality stream, check out somebody else's stream. Check out someone else's stream. Oh, what am I showing you? Not even showing you the right thing. Here we go. So what I was saying was, is pandas is fantastic. If you want to learn how to replace your headers, which is important, if you're pulling in a CSV file, I gotta talk to this, bring this over. If you want to talk to a CSV file, or bring in a CSV file, and you want to replace the headers, which happens all the time, you know, you get a CSV file from a client. When you're bringing it in, you want to format it the way you want it formatted, and set up the way you want it set up, so that when you ingest the data into your database, or whatever, any type of analysis you're doing with it, you want it to look right. And so hopefully you guys can see that this time. If you can't, I'm wasting a bunch of time, but this, it's literally just telling us how to replace the header. So, you know, we're literally replacing our headers. And then down here, it's asking the question, hey, you know, can you, can you do that? And now I'm going to save this data set and then read other data formats. That's what I really wanted to get to, by the way, was reading the different types of formats, because CSV, I got down pretty well. I get enough experience with that in my job. And again, I don't do this in like, I don't do this in Jupiter Notebooks as a standalone. It's integrated into Azure in Databricks, and I use that all the time. Let me see if you guys can see it. Need a backwrite to remove auto-contrast. Can you share your screen so we can see clearly? I wish I could. I'm not that advanced of a streamer. This is not my, this is not my forte streaming. I do this because I just want to study with you, but I'm doing a lot of talking. I'm gonna go a little bit in just a second. Okay, I'm doing a lot of talking. This is supposed to be a study session, so I'm kind of failing, because I'm distracting everybody. But in, let me give you, let me do this. In, at 25 minutes, in three minutes, I'm gonna stop talking for about 10 or 15 minutes and just study. Because I don't want to take away from you guys, so I'm trying to read, read some of your questions. The answer to, to answer your question, no. I don't, I'm not good enough to, I don't have a high-quality enough stream to do that. So, you know, it is what it is, but I appreciate you coming in. I appreciate you joining me, trying to study. I'm working on Coursera. I'd like, uh, if, if some other people would join, I'm working on the importing data sets. I'm about to read in, I, the one that I really want to work on is JSON. JSON is a semi-structured data set. It is one that I have to get help on often through coworkers and Stack Overflow. And so I'm hoping that I get a little bit of information on how to read in JSON files. Those ones always get me, just to be completely honest. So I got two more minutes to answer some questions, and I'm going into full study mode for like at least 15 minutes. So let me see. Let me see what we got. Okay. Zen asks, let me ask you a question. Someone who has no clue for data analyst job, a data job, is picking hammer up to work. Could you advise which program or course? Or who just to start data? So if you're just starting out with data, the one I'm working on is a really good one. I put it in the comments. It is the IBM Data Analyst Professional Certificate, goes over SQL, Excel, and Python. I think it's a really, really good one. And that's the one I'm working on right now, reading in different files using Python. Super, super important. I use it all the time. Let me see. Will this be available later on YouTube channel? Yeah, it'll be available. I mean, I'm not gonna delete this. If people want to watch it again later, they can hear me talk more. Let me see. Where do you get the data anyway? Data can come from anywhere. But if you're looking for data sets, two places that I personally really like is Google data sets. So if you type into Google, Google data sets, you will find an abundance of data sets. And if you also go to Kaggle, some really good data sets. If you want raw data, probably Google data sets is the best place, because in Kaggle, a lot of that data is already set up for you. So if you want some raw data, which means it's not, it's not cleaned, it's not formatted, it's just how it came from, whatever system it came from, that's what I recommend. All right, guys, it is at the 25-minute mark. I'm gonna go do a little bit of study time with just some music in the background. And yeah, that's it. Keep asking questions, keep commenting. I will go back through and read through some of that stuff in a little bit. But right now, I'm gonna go into a little bit of study time. I'm gonna be working on, hopefully, learning a little bit more about reading in JSON files, because again, that's something I need to work on. So, all right, I'll see you guys in a little bit. I'm gonna turn this up. Ooh, which one did I miss? Oh, week two is really good on the data analysis of Python. Data formatting, data normalization, data wrangling, really good one to look at. I'm sure you guys have never seen me study, but when I start really studying, I get this face on. I don't know if you can see my face right now, but I get like really serious. I wonder if that's what I look like right now, but it's like stern look on my face. People think I'm angry, but I just, I get focused. Alright, so it's asking me to replace this value. Now we're talking about changing data types and data formats. Very good to know how to do. This is really good. Let me talk on this for a second. This is called data standardization. If you don't know what that means, it's standardizing the data. So it's all the same. When you're working with raw data, I think the biggest one of the easiest example I can give you for data that needs to be standardized is a date format. Date formats have so many different variations from day, month, year, month, day, year, year, day, month, all these types. You can do, you can use slashes, you can use dashes, you can use periods to, in between the month, day and the year. Standardizing those is something where I typically use something like regular expression to remove all of the, use all regular expression to remove all the characters that you don't want. And well, depending on how it's formatted, but you know, if they're all somewhat similarly formatted, I'll remove everything and I reformat how I want it to be formatted. In cases where they're all different, like their year, month, day, day, month, year. I have to section out each of those first. Put them in the format that I want them and then I add them back. Because you can't, if they're all different and you try to take, use regular expression, take out everything and then put them back in, it's going to be a mess. And so, you know, you kind of have to section it off and slowly with each piece fix it. And so you do that because later down the road, if you want to do some type of, some type of, what's it called? Gosh, time series, you need clean date data. And so that's just an example of why data standardization is super important and how you can do it. This one is talking about standardizing miles per gallon for liters per hundred kilometers. And so they're, they're standardizing that. And so really interesting example on this one. Dude, this one's really sad. I hope you guys can get through this one. This song is super sad. I'm just going to change this. It's like depressing. That's better. And I'll tear it out on my stream over here. All right, let me check on you guys. Let me check on you. Let's see, I'm coming back. Can you give us an introduction to Azure? I mean, what is it? How does it work? You can code just like we do in Jupiter. All I know is that it's cloud based platform all in one sort of. I need to do a video on that because it's hard to show right here because I don't, this is not my work computer. If I was on my work computer, which I can't show you anyways, I could show you everything in Azure. But obviously for legal reasons, I cannot do that, but it's fantastic. But yeah, that's just gonna have to be a video. I can't really show you that. Pedro asks, do you think a data analyst should get Tableau and Salesforce certifications? Depends on the, I think the Tableau one is standard. You should get the Tableau one for sure. The Salesforce one, it depends on the kind of market you're in, what kind of work you're going for. There are some people who build their entire careers on Salesforce. And, you know, if that's the way you want to go, that's the way you want to go. I think that's kind of a, you know, you definitely get into a Salesforce kind of cycle where you get, you become the Salesforce guy. That's not something I personally want and I've used Salesforce. That's up to you. Do I recommend any books? There's a few books that I recommend. They're in some videos. I don't have them on like on me at the moment, but there's one on Python and one on SQL that I've read. But if you send me an email to alextheanalyst95@gmail.com, I will send, you know, I'll send you the links to those books for you. Zen, have a great night. Thanks for joining. I appreciate you. I'm going to go back to studying in just a few minutes, but wanted to answer some questions while we're here. Vilas asks, what are we doing watching you study? Answer is yes. Coursera is hosting this study with me session where I, I study and you guys study with me. I am not a professional streamer by any means. And so you're getting kind of what I would consider a super low quality chill time to study. And I've been doing too much talking, but I don't mind answering your questions at all. If I don't have any credit card, can I still learn on Coursera? I have no idea. You'd have to check that out. What music platform are you using? I am using YouTube Music. What would be the best advice for beginners? SQL first, Excel, Tableau. Worry about Python a little later is my opinion. It's a little bit tougher. Highly recommend taking lots of courses to learn all the skills. You can start with the free ones. I have a whole video on free videos and courses that you can take. That's my biggest advice is start with those skills. Start with SQL first, learn how to use a database, learn Excel for data analysis, learn Tableau for data visualization. Do you recommend any IBM or Microsoft certifications? Off the top of my head, Microsoft certifications, yeah, there's a good one. They used to, I think they just discontinued these. They used to have some good SQL ones. And now they have one called the IBM, Microsoft Data Analyst Certification, which I do recommend and they have a free learning, a learning path on there. And I, I've taken all the courses and they are phenomenal. So there you go. There you go. I'm going to get back to studying a little bit because I'm actually getting through some really good stuff right now. Wait, wait, let me pull the right one. Right now I'm looking at data normalization and I really like this stuff. This is stuff that my team works a lot on at work. Mostly are like database developers, data engineer type people. But this is definitely stuff that I, we do at work all the time. And so I like reading up on it and just looking at, kind of going back to the basics to be like, oh yeah, I actually, I actually use it all the time. That kind of thing. I think it's fun, but also because I'm actually, I'm like, oh, I forgot about that. And then it's reminding me of stuff. So, um, yes, I'm going to go back to it and I will catch up on some questions in a little bit, but I want to, I want to study a little bit on this. And I really, and I really like this song. It's super relaxing. That was a really good. I was going through the week two of data analysis with Python, going over data wrangling. Really good stuff. Really good stuff in there. I can already tell you that. Let me see which one I want to go over next. I might take some quizzes, see if I can pass on these quizzes. See if I got these right. I don't actually know if this is right. Okay, what was the first one? I passed. For people who are just joining, this is really just supposed to be a chill study time. If I was a better If I was a better streamer, I might have shared my screen, but I genuinely, either I don't know how to do it or my computer's not set up for it and I apologize for that. But I appreciate you joining just to hang out and study. I am currently working on the IBM Data Analyst Professional Certificate. I'm gonna move this right over here so I can talk to you guys for a second. And it's really good. I was just working on data normalization in Python. The course data analysis with Python and that IBM Data Analyst Professional Certificate is super good. I was just talking about how I was going over data normalization and, and how that process works. Super good stuff. But, you know, you guys just go check it out. I did a video on it earlier and that's on Tuesday. And so that's why I'm walking through it with you guys. Really good stuff. Let me answer some more questions while, while I'm here. Yeah, you're studying the IBM, so Dark Brown Iris is studying the IBM Data Science Professional Certificate. That is one that I went through the entire thing. So I also have done that one. This one is somewhat, it has some overlapping courses, but a little bit more geared towards data analysis. And so, which obviously I am a big fan of. Let me see. Melody, you're saying StreamYard is good for streaming and sharing screen. I will need to look into that. If you wouldn't mind sending me a message on that. I know you know how to get in contact with me. I would love to look into knowing how to stream better. Just not my thing. Obviously you guys know I make videos. I try to make good videos. Some of them are good. But streaming has never been my forte. Is Apache Spark one of the best tools for real time data analytics? I love Apache Spark. It's super powerful, super strong. I think it's not, not everyone needs to know it. But if you already know SQL, Excel, Python, Tableau, maybe Power BI, you know, those core skills really well, Spark is a good thing to pick up. And I use it and it's very, 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 very good. Let me see. Yeah, Anne says she's not sure about the peer, peer, the peer process though. You know, if, I don't know if you watched my video, I sent in some, I thought it was funny when I was making it because I was genuinely curious. Because when I was doing my data analyst or data science professional certification, I did everything really well. So I tried really hard. But because I was making that video, I wanted to see if people actually reviewed them. So I sent in some Excel. They were supposed to be like some pivot tables and stuff in there and I sent them in basically blank. But I just wrote checking to make sure that these pure ones that work. And I got a terrible grade. And so it seems to me like, you know, the peer for, for at least for what it's worth, just to make sure you're at least kind of doing what you're supposed to be doing, it works. But you're not getting like, it's not, you're not getting like super graded, you know, graded very extensively. And it's not a bad thing, you know? Can I do an end to end data analysis project? I 100% will be doing that. That is why I stopped, I'm doing two Alex the Analyst shows per month instead of fours, because I want to focus a lot more on doing tutorials. This upcoming week, I'm gonna have a SQL tutorial. I'm finishing up my advanced series. But yes, I will be doing that. I'm gonna answer one more question and then I'm gonna go back to studying for a bit. But Cam asks, as a healthcare data analyst, what is work like analyzing hospital stuff? Also, is it a lot of teamwork? I like working alone. Really good questions. I'll start at the beginning. Yeah, I work in healthcare. I've worked from everything from, I worked with just about every type of healthcare data you can imagine. From claims data to personal data, diagnoses, or to allergies. I mean, you can, any, any type of data that you can imagine. I'll give some examples in a second, but any type of data that you can imagine, I think I've worked with. Let me skip this song. That's better. I've kind of worked with, and so things like what insurance do they have? So provider information, you know, the claims information is a really big one, super, super important. You can have allergy information. You could have, you know, relative information, contact information, addresses, phone numbers. And that's just specific data points, but you know, you can, let me think, let me think. Okay. So let me go a little bit more into specialized stuff. So medication, type of diagnosis and how's that relates to their medication. You can do oncology data, hematology type data. And all of these things have totally different things within those subcategories, which are very, very specialized. Like oncology is one that I work with a lot. So like cancer research, cancer drugs, patients who have cancer. That's a lot of the data that I'm working with right now for specific people. And it's, I mean, you really gotta know the data well. That's why I always talk about, you know, you really need to know the technical aspect of it. Let me turn this down a second. You really need to know the technical aspect of it, but you also really need to know the domain aspect of it. Because the domain stuff is really important. I couldn't do what I do if I didn't understand how the data works, where it's coming from, why it's being done. And I didn't know all of this when I started. You pick it up as you go. And so some information on that. I'm gonna go back to studying for a little while and then maybe answer a few more questions and then probably wrap it up for the night. But I've enjoyed hanging out with you guys. I really truly have. But if you have any more follow up questions, ask them and I will get to them when I can. When I, when I, I can right now, but when I get back, I'm gonna study, I'm gonna, I wanna look at, I wanna look at some of the other weeks in this data analysis with Python and see what they look like really quick. Real quick, a lot of people. I would have to, this kind of looks like it. There's a model development is week four in this, in this course. A lot of people ask me how like model data. That might be a good one to check out. I haven't looked into it a ton yet because I haven't looked at that course, but that might be a good one to look at. I was about to bring my cat up here. She was checking things out. I'm knocking out these quizzes. Just did one on the group buy in Python. Now I told my wife that I would be done by nine. And I don't want to be a liar, but I'm gonna go a few minutes over and I hope you all understand. Let's see. I'm bringing this back over to do a little Q and A time with some stuff in the chat. And then I'm gonna call it for the night. Let's see, we got, let's see what we got. Let's see, I'm looking at some, I'm looking at the chat. Oh, so Cam had asked a question before and I didn't answer all the parts of it. Is it a lot of teamwork? Cause he says he likes working alone. Cam, to answer your question, I, I do. I work on a, on a big team and it is a lot of teamwork. I work very closely with database developers, business analysts, data analysts, data scientists for, I mean, just a ton of projects. I mean, it's hard to explain how many projects we have going at one time. And so I'm coordinating and working with a lot of different teams on a lot of different stuff. So yeah, it's a lot of teamwork. I'm, I'm sorry, man. Let's see. If you are not a native English speaker and you're watching this, I appreciate you. I will try to slow down a little bit for you. I know this is the ending of it. I just saw that. So I'm sorry, but I appreciate it. Where can I find the music you listen that I'm listening to? This one is a lofi hip hop beats to chill to by Chilled Cow. And if you don't know him, he, he does lots of, that's his, YouTube name is Chilled Cow. You can check out his stuff. Let's see. Play YouTube video on your TV. I could, but that would take too long to set up. I just got this fireplace going in the background for some ambiance. Let's see, let's see, let's see. I am doing, let me see. Giaf says, I'm doing the IBM SQL introduction as we speak. What do you think of it? I actually looked through it and just about every single thing that I saw was really good. I mean, to be honest, I've already taken it, but I was just glancing through it again. Everything in there is super relevant. What I will say is that I don't think it goes advanced enough. You know, but it goes over super great concepts. All the, if you could learn everything that's in that course, you will be set for 95% of what you need to do as a data analyst. I, I just flat out. But if you want to go above and beyond that, there are some more advanced concepts that it doesn't cover. And so you just kind of have to look into that. And I, you know, you can find it on a lot of different courses or places. But, you know, I'm not gonna go into everything that you need to learn, but I have some videos on SQL myself that you might want to check out. And some of those more advanced things I do go over and I am continuing to go over as we speak. Aside from NumPy, Matplotlib, pandas and Seaborn, what other Python packages do you recommend learning? I always say those exact ones that you just listed as like the go-to, because those are really standard that a lot of people use. And to be honest, there are so many, there's hundreds of other packages. It just depends on what you're going to be using it for. And like what kind of data you're working with. So it's hard to give a specific one. Those are the ones that I normally give because those are the ones I actually use and that I think are really good. It's pronounced Jeff or Gef? Aw, man. I'm gonna say Jeff. Jeff English. But yeah, sorry if I mispronounced that. I'm trying to keep it super chill over here. I'm just trying to talk in like a chilled voice, like really calm, really relaxed. I don't know if that's working, but Jeff, cool, cool, cool. Have I used IBM Cognos? I've used it, but I don't use it, if that makes sense. Do you need to know networking stuff for data analysis? No, probably not. I wouldn't worry about that at the moment. Aaron says, oh my gosh, I'm late, guys. What has been said about this course? Checked out the SMU data bootcamp, but not wanting to dish out 13,000. So I don't want to go on a huge tangent on bootcamps really quick, but 13,000 for a bootcamp is pretty expensive in my opinion. And the things that you typically learn on bootcamps, I have a whole video dedicated to things I don't like about bootcamps, but that's not true. It compares bootcamps to self-learning or getting a degree in bootcamps. So all three of those. But in that I talk a lot about how I think bootcamps, you can do almost all that learning on your own through platforms like Coursera, which is what I did. And, you know, if I'm, I'm guessing that you may know me if you're watching the stream. But if you don't, you know, I started out knowing, I didn't even know what SQL was, you know, five years ago. But I taught myself through places like Coursera and worked through a lot of the things that we looked at today, which was the IBM Data Analyst Professional Certificate. These kinds of things where you can get all this information in one place, work through it yourself. You know, I personally think that $13,000, one, I could never have afforded that. I was flat broke when I first became a data analyst. But, you know, if you do, I mean, maybe pay for a mentor and then work through this stuff to yourself and pay the mentor like a couple hundred bucks a month to work with you and you'll save yourself a ton of money. And you'll probably just get just about as, if you're really self motivated, you'll do just as well. You know, you just have to be really self motivated, really good at time management to pull that off. But it could save you tens of thousands of dollars. That's my thoughts on bootcamps. I'm gonna do about five more minutes and then I, I gotta get out of here, guys, because my wife will kill me. That's not true. My wife is very supportive. She's probably up there like happy. I'm, I still got people watching right now. How advanced statistical knowledge needs for data analysis? You know, I, I get asked this question a lot about math, you know, how much math do I need to know? How much statistics? There's, there's no set amount. I'm just gonna be honest. I don't think it's as advanced as most people think. Most people are thinking like, I need really advanced, like I need a master's degree in statistics. You don't. So don't, don't be, I wouldn't get too hung up on needing to know the statistics as advanced as you may think. What do you think about the Nano degree on data analysis of Udacity? I think if you can get it on a huge, huge discount, under $500 max, it might be worth it. But I think it's kind of like, you know, how much money, what is this song? This is sad. But I think it's kind of like, you know, how much money, what is this song? This is sad. Gosh, give me a second. I'm going to, I'm going to get to a not sad song. Let's go with this one. And so, yeah, I think that, I think that it's okay if you can get it for cheap because I know people have gone through it and really like the course information and they teach it really well, but it's very expensive. That's just my opinion. Samia, hope I pronounced that right. Very cool name. Hey, will completing the IBM data analyst make me job ready as a fresher and how, how to look for a job? It'll get you there. It'll get you the basics of the core skills. You will need to supplement with other things though. Like I highly recommend working on like Tableau, really working in some, some of the native platforms. Like if you're learning SQL, learn SQL in MySQL Workbench or learn SQL in SQL Server Management Studio. Learn it in the actual place where you're going to be using it on a job. That's just my help. And how to look for a job, I have a whole video on LinkedIn. I would look on LinkedIn. That's where I've had a ton of success. And I recommend a lot of people go and I have a whole video on how to, it's like the top three tips or something. Excuse me. I think that's what it's called, on how to get a job on like through LinkedIn. So check that one out. Is going, Cam asked a really good question and I think it's worth talking about. Is going for an internship better than an entry level job? Maybe for some people, like right out of college. But for, I would say the vast majority of people, if you have a relevant degree and you have some type of portfolio, I would try to go for the entry level job. Get paid for the work that you're doing. You know, internships are definitely a good option for a lot of people who are right out of school, who need experience, who want to get experience under the belt, which is, you need to have that. But it isn't for everybody. You know, if you're switching careers at 30 years old, you shouldn't be getting an internship. Just my opinion. Reading through, I'm going to answer two more questions. KA says, and this is more personal to the channel, it says, will you ever do something else and pivot in a different direction in the future? Career wise and maybe YouTube channel wise, I'll answer both. YouTube channel wise, I want to do a lot more tutorials for you guys. When I was first starting out, I had a really tough time finding all of, like, what do I really need to know to become a data analyst? Like what do I need to know? And I learned all this useless information on, in Python, all this useless information in Excel and SQL, not really Tableau. Tableau was all kind of useful, but you know, I learned all this useless, useless stuff that I've never ever used. And I wish that I had it all in one place where I could learn all the things I would need to learn. That's what I'm going to try to do. That's what I promised I'd do a year ago and I've been trying to do that slowly. And I'm even more dedicated to it now. And so that's kind of, you know, for, for the channel, I don't, you know, I don't, I'm not changing up the, kind of like where I'm headed with it soon. For my life, uh, yeah, yeah, you know, I think I might change things up. You know, we've been talking about, like me and my wife been talking about like our future, where we want to be in five years, 10 years. And so, you know, I can't share too much, but yeah, of course I have plans. I'm going to change things up. Data analyst wise, maybe go into management within the next five years. I really like working with people. I like, I think I'd be a good manager. If my manager is watching right now, you're the best manager. You are fantastic. I hope you get promoted so that I can take your spot. That's the, that's what I want to happen. Cause you're a great, great boss. And last question, let me make sure this is a good one. Okay. There's some really good questions in here, but I'm trying to, I'm just making sure and seeing which ones. And this is the last question because I gotta, I gotta go. I gotta go soon. But this is, this is Charlie. Hey, Charlie. Oh, no, 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 no. Don't scratch me. That was dangerous. That is Charlie. That was the first animal we ever got in this house. Now we have three, two cats and a dog. Max is right over here. You guys know Max. He's awesome. He's laying down right behind me. I'm trying, I'm just want to make sure I get a good question and this is an interesting question and one that I think is worth talking about. And it's from Jay Brown. He says, what do you think are the main things data analysts can do to provide high value to employers that are not currently paying a higher way for analysts? I'm going to kind of take that in a different direction. The initial question, and I apologize if this doesn't exactly answer your question. And I'm going to change this song because this song is depressing for the very end of the show, or end of the stream. That's better. Why are some data analysts paid more than others? And what can you do to kind of make value for yourself to make more money? The biggest thing that I think that I did, and I'm just going to talk about myself because it's hard to talk in broad strokes on this, in my opinion. The big, the two biggest things I would say is domain knowledge. I focused on healthcare. I don't see myself getting out of healthcare because I just know it really, I, I feel like I know it pretty well. And so that knowledge makes me valuable. If I wanted to apply to another place and I can prove that I know all these things about healthcare, they're going to be like, man, we, this guy knows his stuff. He's very valuable to us because we don't want to have to train someone on this again, who just knows the, the technical side of things. That's why domain, domain skills, knowledge is so important. It saves the company money, time, training, all that stuff. And I can hit the ground running instead of need to be trained for a month or two on what the data is, what the data means, how it's collected, how it's transformed, what, what, what that means to the hospitals, why they, why the hospitals want the data that way. I go, I can go on and on. The second thing is, is focusing in on the technical skills that are relevant to your domain. And so for me, the one that I honed in on really hard and just became what I would consider very good at for, for a data analyst. I like, I have people who I work with who are way better at sequel than me. But for a data analyst, I think I'm very good at sequel. And I, that is my bread and butter and I can sell myself on that all day, every day. And so if they really need someone who's good at that one skill, and I have lots of other skills and I can tell them that. But if they are like, we really need someone who's good at sequel. I am like, I, I start getting a little bit cocky because I'm like, I got this. Because I'm really good at sequel for a data analyst. And I make that caveat because again, I work at database developers a lot and they can show me up any day of the week. And if any of you guys are watching, anyone at work is watching, you guys know, like, I think I'm pretty decent, right? But you guys are better because you guys do that, do that nonstop 24/7. So, all right, I'm switching up the song one more time. Because I'm closing out. Thanks for joining. Thank you Coursera for hosting this. I really do enjoy, and I think the core, the IBM data analyst professional certificate, which is kind of what we were looking at today, if you didn't see earlier. That's what we were going over today. It is really good. It has a lot of super, super great stuff that I was walking through and I was like, man, you know, I forgot how important this is and it teaches it in a really good way. So shout out to Coursera because I appreciate you guys hosting this and I appreciate you guys setting this up and, and letting me do this. No, this was not the most high end sharing my screen thing you've ever seen. But you know, you guys have seen, if you guys have seen my channel, you guys know I'm not super technically advanced. I'm, I know how to share my screen on a video, but not on a stream. I'm going to look into knowing how to do that though. I got, I got some tips from some people in the, in the chat who will maybe, maybe help me out, but I appreciate you guys. I really do appreciate you guys coming out. I'm trying to keep, I'm trying to keep my voice super chill, super relaxed. Just because that's what this is all about. Just relaxing, studying, becoming better data analysts together. That's what this is all about. This year, I think I've already had maybe 40 people message me and say they've gotten jobs as data analysts. Just on through LinkedIn, on YouTube, through email. And when people, and I'm, I'm not trying to like talk myself up, but I, I, when people tell me that my channels help them, I genuinely am like, I get such a sense of pride and it just drives me to keep going. And so to everyone out there who's trying to become a data analyst this year, make this year your year. Study hard, put in the effort, put in the time, learn the skills. And, you know, it, this year can be as good as you want to make it. And I have really high hopes for each and every one of you. With that being said, thank you for studying with me. Thank you for Coursera to hosting this. Thanks for YouTube for playing the music and the fireplace in the background. If you have any more questions, you can always comment on my videos. I answer just about every single one of those. You can also email me at alextheanalyst95@gmail.com. Love talking to you guys. If I get a ton of emails and I don't reply back for a week, I'm sorry. I was just busy. But cool. I, I appreciate you guys. I don't even know how to end the stream. I have to click this end stream button. It just shows you, I'm not a streamer. I create videos. That's my, maybe I should stay there. You guys let me know. But cool. I appreciate you guys all joining me. You guys have a wonderful night. I will see you on Tuesday. And on Tuesday, I think it's going to be a sequel tutorial. So look out for that one. Cool. All right. I'm clicking this end stream button very soon and then the stream will be over. So thanks for joining me. Goodbye.